We'll have the call to order. Welcome to the Bossier City Regular Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March the 12th, 2024. It is 3:02. We'll start with the invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Don Williams.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, thanking you for the blessings that you have given us, Lord. We pray that you will be with us in these council chambers today as we conduct the business of the people of Bossier City. Lord, we send our continued prayers to City Attorney Charles Jacobs, that you continue to work with him and continue to help him. Lord, we pray that you'll be with each and every one of us as we depart from here today. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Please face a flag and repeat your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
In accordance with Louisiana Open Meeting laws and the adopted Bossier City Council meeting rules and resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record, and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion, with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impersonate, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become vortuous while addressing the council, shall be forthwith by the President Portier, barred from further audience before the council, unless permission to continue be granted by majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilperson or a mayor, except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum. Ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
We, council?
Yep.
We have an add-on request. It'll be under new business number 18. Parade permit fee waiver for crosswalk, I walk with the cross, March the 29th, 2024. This item is being requested to be added due to an email error in the police department.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we add on new business number 18.
Second. All right, we have an addition. Councilmember Smith first, Councilmember Williams second. Comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
We don't have any ceremonial matters or recognition of guests or anything, okay?
Before we move on, Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Yep.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilmember Williams to approve the agenda as amended. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, council, now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 27th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting and dispense with reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Darby. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote. All right, unfinished business?
Mr. Hammond?
Don Darby, David, Chris, Maggio, Hammond.
My dear.
Are you a gay or?
Yeah, yeah, I hear that.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the City of Bossier as surplus to the city's need and provide for disposal according to law. Final reading.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to appropriate 15,000 from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to provide funding to the Shreveport Bossier Convention and Tours Bureau to support local Mardi Gras parade. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute an agreement between the City of Bossier and the Department of Transportation and Development. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business? Adopt a resolution authorizing. Adopting ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirements to replace MCC components at Bossier's Northeast Wastewater Treatment Facility, resulting from a single-phase event resulting from storm-related power disruption at a cost of $20,000 to come from sewer capital contingency funds. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First and second by Councilman Smith and Hammond. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to allocate 40,000 from the Streets and Drainage Fund to contract with Nixon Engineering Solutions to provide design services for vacant drive drainage improvement. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to amend ordinance 48 of 2023, appropriate additional 100,000 from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund for a left-turn lane on US 71 at Golden Meadows. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to contract with Beast Engineering to provide design services for the 2024 citywide street improvement project. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance amending the 2024 Streets and Drainage Fund budget by $100,000 to increase the capital street improvement project to approve change order number one for 2023 citywide street improvement project with an increase of $104,610.38 for the total contract price of $1,576,788.13. Final reading? I mean, first reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
No.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance for public utilities to fill a senior operating position. Backfill any vacant positions this creates. Eliminate a vacant operator position and increase the salaries for all water treatment division employees using the salary surplus available from staffing adjustments resulting in a net neutral change to the 2024 water fund operating budget. First reading.
Second. Making motion, second.
I thought you did, second.
First by Councilman Maggio, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, I do, Mr. President. This is becoming a kind of a trend here that when they promote somebody and then they don't backfill a position of somebody, and then they give the money and give everybody pay raises in that department. I don't see it truly fair to all the other departments that don't have that luxury in order to give their staff and the people that work in that department a pay raise. That's just my thoughts. I'm sure it's not a popular thought, but that's my thoughts on it.
To your point, I think that we do do that in other departments.
No, that's what I was saying, that it's becoming a trend now that that's what they're doing, not not filling up a position and then the money that's left over is spread out amongst the other employees in that department.
But I thought you said that the other departments are not able to do that.
If they don't have somebody that's leaving.
But I mean, that has happened historically. I'll just give you what we prioritized in the past. I will leave it at that, that the council has sought to provide a pot of money to these departments, and if they feel as though that their department and how they need to run it, that they need to increase their salaries, we, as a council, in the past have allowed that latitude, regardless of which department it was, to retain the personnel that they need to operate.
And they delete that position too.
Correct.
To use that money.
So I'm just giving you rationale of what in the past, why we've allowed that, because it, again, in the past, we've chosen not to micromanage, and I guess for lack of a better term, the departments, you know, we're here to provide the pot of money for them to utilize as they see fit, and I guess, you know, that's the reasoning and rationale while, why this has gone on for years in the past.
So in that same retrospect, if our police chief and fire chief come to us and say they need an extra $3 million in order to maintain and keep employees, are we going to give it to them?
I don't think that's, you're comparing apples and oranges. We're talking about an expense-neutral proposition. You're not. You're talking about increasing the budget by 3 million. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. It's a net neutral.
Yeah, no, I understand it's a net neutral, but I mean, it's just.
And fire and police get 2% guaranteed annually, so, which is an increase in the budget of roughly 500 or 600,000 dollars a year, so.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm not, I'm just giving you.
No, I mean, just 2% isn't enough to cover groceries nowadays.
I think the point you might be trying to make, and I don't want to speak.
I made it.
Speak for you, is that police and fire, they don't, they don't, they have to fill all their positions. They don't have the luxury to get rid of positions to spread wealth around. I think it's the point you were making.
All right, any additional comments?
Well, I mean, I want things to be clear, because we have had in the past where, and Chief Howgan's here and Chiefs have gone, where they have actually restructured, and this goes back many years, where they may have felt as though their departments were top-heavy, that too many people had migrated, and we needed more boots on the ground, and correct me if I'm wrong, the two chiefs, that, you know, we let those people through normal attrition disappear so that we had more money to put back with boots on the ground. Is that correct?
And I do recall, this was prior to Chief Howgan, I don't know if Chief Howgan has done it, but I recall a couple of years ago, I know that they eliminated a jailer position or two to do that very thing, that they did do that, and eliminated a jailer position and spread that that money around, so. It does happen in other departments as well.
Any additional comments or questions? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance recognizing the Bossier City Engineering Department drone surplus to the needs of Bossier City, of the City of Bossier. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to approve report of change order two for the Tinsley Boat Bow Park Parking Lot Expansion Phase One and Two with an increase in project cost of $42,013.40. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Todd, would you, would you mind coming up and just telling us what this change order's for?
Yes, sir. So the original intent was to implement an ADA grade, grate, storm drain grate. That was, didn't have as many voids in it, so it was heel-proof, and there was just an oversight in the plans that that model number of that grate just didn't get translated, but the original intent was to include this in the project.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to contract with Silver Design Group LLC to provide design services for a turn lane located at the intersection of Louisiana Highway 3, Ben Road, the China Berry Drive. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to declare the completion of the Ben Water Tank Rehabilitation at Payne Project by VIP Tank LLC, including change order number one in the amount of $2,050, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement the water capital in contingency fund. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to contract with Mancheck Consulting Group to provide design services for the rehabilitation of Brownlee Roads. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do. I see that Mancheck, we're going to contract with them. I thought we already had a contract with them. Is there any reason why further up, we've already gone through it, that they could not do the consulting on the citywide street projects instead of paying an outside source when we're already paying Mancheck?
So this project's very similar to the Airline Drive project that we just put out. You'll see, excuse me here for my notes. Yes, so very similar to the Airline Drive project. So the design services that are outside of, I guess, our managing contract with the engineering contract, we'll be able to have Geotech involved in this and surveying involved in this to, you know, adequately improve the road. I mean, we have contracts with Beast, Nixon, Rayleigh, you know, there's certainly other options out there, but we expect to be able to use our resources to expedite this work and get all the 2024 capital projects out and about before the end of the first quarter.
All right.
Any additional questions? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond?
Ma'am, it didn't pop up.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to reappoint Angela Williamson to represent the City of Bossier, seating State of Louisiana on the Board of Directors of Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority and provide for other matters in the connection of their with. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the possibility of early promotion due to the possible upcoming retirement of following positions, administrative assistant to the fire chief, chief of EMS, chief of special operation, master mechanic, and two deputy chiefs. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Max, the, Mr. President, I asked the chief if he could share if there's any net neutral or any type of increase within those promotions.
The people retiring, there may be a three, six-month time where we're paying two at that position until they retire, and then it'll go back to just like it is right now, but we didn't hire the first quarter of the year to give us land yet to prepare for these situations that are arising. This is all starting June 28th with the first one retiring, one in August, one in September, a couple I don't know when, another one before August. They won't say exactly when, and that's why I put possible and all that in here. I'm 90% sure all of these will, but there's other ones coming too. This is, so many people hired in '93, '94, '95, and they're just all timing out at this time, so there's no way I can, like, take the guy over the budget and bring somebody up that has no experience and no training, and they be able to do this job, so I need to have a little bit of time to get them, get them trained to be able to learn what they're fixing to be over.
Okay, so will there be any adjustment to salaries or not?
At some, when they get promoted, yes, there will be for a certain amount of time.
Okay, so how will we know if it's not net neutral?
It will be, it should be below net neutral, or because I didn't hire, we're five or six, eight people down right now in that way. We'll start the hiring process around May, so you have those salaries between January 1st and May that you have. so you have those salaries between January first and May that you haven't been paid. That's the whole reasoning behind you being able to pay, because I can't bring them and ask them to do a position, they have a class plan. So if they're doing this job, you have to pay them for that job. You can't bring them up as a, say, a captain and make them do administrative assistance pay. You have to pay them administrative assistance pay when you bring them up to train them, so...
So it's a possibility it's not going to be net neutral because you have to meet the criteria to pay them if they in a different slot.
I guess if my planning was very poor, then it could go over, but then I'd have to come to y'all for more money. But knock on wood, I haven't had to do that since two thousand and eleven, and I hope I don't.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Additional questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for public works to fuel a labor or two position in the streets and drainage division due to resignation and backfilling any vacant positions this create, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience, questions from the audience, I'm sorry. Comments from the council, questions? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for public works to field two equipment operator one position in the streets and drainage division and labor position in the street sweeping and grass cutting division as approved in two thousand and twenty-four budget, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of a county clerk due to resignation and backfilling any vacant position this may create in the sales tech department, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approved placement in the official minutes, the appointment of firefighter Monroe Townsend as the fire department representative of the Bossier City Municipal Fire and Police Silver Services Board appointment effective March seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, expires March sixth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approved parade permit fee waiver for crosswalk, I walk with the cross, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. This item is being...
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Any reports? Mayor?
I know I'm very proud, I know each one of you are, and everybody in Bossier City that the Parkway High School girls won state championship again this year. So I wanna, and I wanna praise them for two years in a row, which I think is awesome, so I do want to get that out.
You got them coming again, Mayor?
I hope they are, I, yeah, I would, we're working on that now.
Yeah, I've already reached out to them. They're, she's gonna get back to me on when they can... A lot of them are playing softball and stuff like that, so she's gonna let me know when they're, all done.
One of them, we had last year, Mahala Williams, she's playing for LSU and doing a great job, too, yeah.
All right, any additional announcements, councilman?
Well, Mr. President, since this is Women's Month, I want to, um, say happy Women's Month, and had it not been for a great woman in my life, I wouldn't be here, my mom, and so I'm just happy that this is Women's Month.
Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned.